...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Call order roll call starting on my left.
Counselperson Jeremiah O'Gorman.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Dick Updike.
Counselperson Brent Fire.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Have we got everything beat on there now? Anything out there you guys want to add? Alright, looking for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of the regular meeting of November 27th, 2018. Motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
Come on in Pete. We've got a second from Jeremiah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of special meeting of December 4th. That's the Truth in Taxation.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
We've got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. That'll take us financing budget, that takes us to council table with additional accounts. Listening? Any questions on any of those?
I had one quick one, not just curiosity, but... So we had to move some Alfield fence at Bear Cave for something.
They took the fence from the outside of the poles and put them onto the inside of the poles.
Fence was damaged.
Yeah.
So they wanted to upgrade and clean it up and stuff like that, and they switched it around because when ball players run into it, the fence, they'd get caught between the posts with it on the outside.
So that was the Alfield fence for all four, all four fields?
Yep, correct.
It's like, wow, fifteen thousand bucks.
Yeah, the funds that were used were monies that had been set aside from ball teams when they threw their fees.
Thought we were gonna use that money for a party tomorrow night.
Jimmy has to go with that one.
It's a grocery party.
The fencing deal ain't cheap.
Any other questions or discussion on the council table? Got a motion to approve from Dick. Do we have a second?
Second.
I thought that was me, glad it was you. You usually find the people to do that.
Wait a minute, I think we have to stop the meeting and we have to leave.
That's the right to a nuclear plant meltdown, Doug.
Motion by Dick, second by Craig. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries.
Mayor, may I also give direction to pay bills as they come in for this month before the end of the year?
Okay, we haven't got another meeting this year, so we'll probably get some more bills by the end of the month.
It would be bills that are within the budget.
Yep. Do you need a motion for that?
We'll just...
We'll include that in your motion.
We're gonna keep it now.
You need a motion?
No, she's gonna keep it in the other one she said.
Alright.
As long as you're okay with that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Everybody's up here with that?
Yeah.
Everybody's good. Thank you Barb. General business, First Amendment general business has proposed 2019 fee schedule. Finance committee has reviewed the proposed 2019 fee schedule and has recommended the following changes. They're listed in yellow on the attachment. All other fees will remain the same. Attached, please find your proposed 2019 fee schedule with the recommended changes highlighted in yellow. If you got any questions on any of those, now's the time to ask. Any questions here?
Still not get the CO2 thing. I mean, we agreed to do it in the meeting, but it's like fire department wants you to get a CO2 detector, and then if it goes off, then they charge it. Might as well not get it.
Vance might be able to explain that charge a little bit more.
Which one?
The CO2 fee for two hundred and fifty.
That's what they respond because they're going off.
Right, that's what I said, so they encourage you to get them, which I personally do not.
So, I talked to Angel Lee about that, so our intention is not to charge for that. So, the form that Angel Lee was using was an old form, it had it on there, just for what council member Craig is talking about, Anderson's talking about, is we don't want people not to call us when their smoke detectors go off, their CO detectors go off. I think she charged one person for that.
Yep, and we got paid for that.
And we got paid for that, but it's not our intention to continue to do that. So, it was just a, we had an old form, she didn't understand, so she charged one person for it.
We can reduce, we can take that off.
So you want that call off there? You want that charge off there?
Yep, we want that charge off there.
Remove it.
Yeah, excellent.
Want to make a motion then, about the fees?
Well, would I, do you make a motion just on that, or do I make a motion to approve the fees?
Approve the whole thing.
No, I'll make a motion to...
As amended, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the fees as written here with the exception that we would get rid of, but we have the CO2 calls.
Okay.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. That takes us on to the finance committee has reviewed the proposed 2019 fee schedule, recommend the final. Proposed 2019 budget, alright?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good thing I switched this two or three times.
Is yours wrong?
Proving, we got two of them on here, right? Two motions we need?
Yep.
First motion will be before approving the certified levy for 2018, the council should approve the 2019 budget. After discussion is held, proposed final 2019 budget is eight million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Alright, the second motion we'll be doing after that is the Truth in Taxation presentation is held on December 4th to receive public comments, concerns, or additional input. In September, the council certified preliminary levy of three million, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five, plus pool referendum levy of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighteen, the fire hall referendum levy of one hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight. Council may certify this amount or a lower amount as a final levy. The attached resolution shows a preliminary levy amount, but this amount can be changed in the motion. The certified final levy needs to be adopted, sent to the county auditor on or before December 28th.
The proposed budget that I'm asking you to prove is exactly the same preliminary budget that we had done earlier. We have not received any requests or even complaints regarding that preliminary budget that we proposed in September. And so, everything is based on that. You're just formally adopting that budget.
We have a motion on the first one to approve the 2019 budget. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Second motion, adopt the resolution 2018, the resolution approving 2018 tax levy collect mode 2019. Moving approval. You got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Next item will be... Year-end 2018 financial request. Two year-end financial items have been come up for the council consideration. Roster sales tax fund number 203 has met all financial obligations, approximately eleven thousand, eight hundred remain in the fund. I am requesting that the funds from the roster sales tax be closed and transferred to the EDA fund number 202. Number two will be the 2017 CIP fund obligations have been met and funds remaining are approximately three hundred and fifty thousand. I'm requesting that that fund number 417 be closed and the funds be transferred to, A, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred be transferred to various debt funds that are estimated to have negative cash flows, and B, the remaining one hundred and eighty thousand transferred to the new 2019 CIP fund number 419. Number three on this one. So special assessments that have been sent to the county for collection in the next ten years from the 2018 CIP project totaled approximately one hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. We did not sell a bond to finance this project, so I am requesting that as the special assessment funds are received each year, that they be applied to the fund 310 bond debt that was used for the 2016 CIP in Bear Cave intermediate school special assessment project. We are anticipating a large negative balance. We also received special assessments from the former 2015 CIP project. They are collected in the general fund, and asking that these funds be collected, funds collected from 2018 through 2025 also be applied to the 310 debt fund, which is the 2016 Bear Cave. If two and three are approved, all the debt funds that the city has on the books will be in very good financial state.
Barb, I had one question on that that I forgot to ask you while we went over stuff, but being that the, your last paragraph there of moving the 2015 CIP money that currently goes into the general fund, will that create much of a negative impact on the general fund?
No, no, it's only about nine thousand dollars a year that would be going over. And the reason that that money was going into the general fund is that we had enough special assessments paid ahead of time that when we were able to have the call issue, we were able to call it and save quite a bit of interest.
Does that gotta be three motions, or can I do one?
No, no, just two.
Two motions?
Two motions, yeah, because number two and number three would all go to the same debt service to be paid.
More questions or discussion on any of that? Not gonna need a motion on number one.
You can even do it all, all in one motion, just adopting one, two, and three.
We have a motion to adopt one, two, and three.
Go.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any other questions or discussion for anybody? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes too. Next under general business from finance, resolutions committing committing general capital funds to specific purposes, committing specific revenue sources and special revenue funds. As you remember, the 2011 governmental accounting standards board adopted GASB number 54, which deals on how we fund reserves, how fund reserves are classified in governmental finance statement reports. It is similar to the old designated reserve terminology that has been used in the past. The two resolutions attached are required as conditions of GASB 54. The first resolution is committing general fund balances as the new method of transferring funds in and out of designated reserves that the council has set up for specific projects or purposes. The finance committee has reviewed this request and will be making a recommendation. The second resolution committing to special revenue funds is to document what funds the city has approved, either by legal requirements or by council approval, to be treated as a special fund. So we're gonna make two resolutions, two motions on this.
At least all the rules are super clear. Good grief, everything, glad you make it somewhat understandable here, but holy buckets.
So, do we have a discussion of questions on either one of these two resolutions we want to be passing, or trying to pass?
The amount of spending in some cases may be just an approximate amount because we're getting a few projects done, you know, in December that we'll be paying for. And most of this money has already been sent for, has been set aside for projects that we know that we're gonna do a year after, you know, maybe you have to set two years of budget in order to do the project in a year. So, it's just part of the funding requirement from the GASB requirements.
So prior to that passing, like this seems to me like they're just requiring a super itemized list of everything you're spending on, so was it common twenty, thirty years ago that...
It was similar, and they called it something different, but now that we are getting the recommendation, I mean, the certification every year, we just have to use their terms. And it's more terminology than it is in practice. Because what we've done in past practices, let's say, well, like seal coating. We need, in order to do a good seal coat project, we've gotta, we've gotta build our product, build that money up for a number of years, because we might only budget a hundred thousand, and we can't do a project for a hundred thousand. Then when we get enough money set aside in the reserves, then we go ahead and do that project that year. So it helps maintain a more even budget instead of one that's going way up one year and then down the next year.
Any other questions for Barb or discussion? Not, first resolution will ask for, is resolution committing general fund balances for specific purposes and projects.
So moved.
Move a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second resolution will be resolution committing specific revenue sources and special revenue funds.
Again, it's terminology, whether a fund is committed and restricted, whether it's committed, whether it's just restricted. And that's all done by federal and state legal requirements. When we do have a special fund in our budgets, an example is the library, because the library, we can give them a budget, and then they have the authority, their library board, in how they spend it. That's a state statute, and so we have to compromise, I mean, we have to call it a committed and restricted money in the budget. Again, it's terminology more than anything.
Well, I'm sure glad you understand all this.
I better, or I wouldn't be working.
About that. Alright, do we have a motion on the resolution committing specific revenue sources and special revenue funds?
I'll approve.
Motion, second Jeremiah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next one, general business is 2018 year-end financial requests. Council had previously approved the cash flow needs for the water and sewer 2018 projects and recognized that retained earnings balance would be utilized. Formal approved, formally approved of the use of the enterprise designations and retained earnings should be considered. Motion is to approve the above use of enterprise designated retained earnings. You can see which projects we're putting that.
This is exactly what you did just a minute ago when you did the general funds, because the enterprise funds are separate from general funds, I have to have a separate RCA.
I'll move it to him. We have a motion by Craig to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second with Jeremiah, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That takes us on to the next item. Change request on final Wapishaw invoice for wastewater treatment project. Mayor King, Sheldon Hale, Harrison, Obernolte, and Newbauer met with the three executive representatives from Wapishaw Construction regarding the amount of the final invoice that we paid them in November. They questioned the deduction amounts that we took out the final bill. Below on the chart, the original deduction is the amount we reduced to final bill by the council approved. After a lengthy discussion, we propose a staff proposal, which will be your middle one, which dropped sixty days from the liquidated damages Wapishaw Construction then wanted to deduct even more liquidated damages in our thirty days. That was their proposal. Staff know that the city council would need to review the request and approve the request. Now, the three amounts, you got the original, the proposed, and the Wapishaw proposed. This is Pete from Wapishaw.
Hello. I guess we're asking for the additional month just because of all the engineering staff who's have encountered. I mean, day one, we had an eight thousand yard pile of spoils in our way from our first excavation. Then it was just a comedy bears after that. We waited at one time four months for approval on a different elevation versus drain dial. And seeing, well, I was the soup on the job, as everybody knows. And every time I tried to do something and I turned around and I'd run into a brick wall. It was something that wasn't approved by the MPCA or various problems that we could not go ahead with construction. And as far as, you know, additional costs that we've incurred, I was up leak testing and doing various testing on the tanks, on the drying beds for months at a time. I would say amount to thousands of dollars. Also, we had winter, you know, just trying to keep the project moving, because we were at stalemate at times. You know, wintering and sheltering on the lower building, you know, we paid for that out of pocket. It was never in the original bid. So, all I'm trying to say is that we've incurred a lot of additional costs already. And obviously, we will, you know, share the liquidated damages, but we're just asking for one more month reduction, I guess is...
As you can see, that's where the main, the main point of contention on all three proposals would be the liquidated damages. I think we're in agreement on all the other items.
So your proposal was to split it ninety-eight apiece, basically?
Yes, and then we are paying for the sledge hauling and, you know, everything else involved, so... And we came up and switched out the motor that was bad, you know, and we've discussed, that's a whole separate item. But, you know, we've been Johnny on the spot as far as trying to keep things going, even though it may not appear that way on the surface. But, you know, I was up working when it was twenty, blow zero, trying to heat that foundation, keep that blower building going. I mean, we did put our best foot forward.
Pete, I'm not gonna argue with you. You were Johnny on the spot, you put your best foot forward, you.
I did.
I'm not totally agreeing on some of your other help, but you did, I'm not gonna, you're not gonna...
No, I agree with you, you know, there was things that went awry on this job, so...
So there's your three choices. Take a beat and bring it to council, and the decision will be made here.
And I just thought I would pop up, you know, and hear the meeting and discussion.
And basically, they're absolutely not in agreement with the first one. And by indications I got that day, that we would move forward. Maybe a court action if we stayed with the ninety-eight thousand. Is that what I'm understanding from what I heard that day?
Apparently so. Right.
Boy, they are two of them that we can agree upon, one or the other.
And, you know, the subcontractors, we had to pay them off, you know, a hundred percent to get the lien waiver. You know, this last couple months of liquidated damages, a lot of it was incurred because of the lien waivers that, you know, and warranty work, that, you know, we had to pay them off. And we cannot share the liquidated damages with the subs, because we won't get the lien waivers. We couldn't close out the contract, and I don't know, it's a catch twenty-two, it's a pair of backs, is what it was. So we paid off the subs, got the lien waiver, and warranties, and closed out the contract. Unfortunately, all that took time.
So our original was ninety-eight, and then after you guys all met before you, or whoever was at that?
Yeah.
You guys as a staff were comfortable reducing and making a new proposal of the seventy-seven? And then they came back with the other one, which was only ten. My personal opinion, and again, I certainly don't know you or what all you put into it, but I trust his word on it, that the whole thing, it did end up being a comedy of errors, to use your opinion, but it wasn't all on you guys. There's a lot of things that went wrong in that whole project. And it became a huge headache for everybody.
Right.
I don't know if I'm gonna put it in motion, but I'm just throwing out my opinion as that I would accept swimming in ninety-eight, ninety days, and I feel like I'd probably be in a soft janitor somewhat, but it's ten thousand bucks in that grand scheme of things. And to close it and be done, that would be my preference. That would be, so I'd be accepting his proposal.
Jeremiah? I'm gonna ask you all your opinions when we're on the call.
Yeah, so, I'm gonna go with Craig on this one, which is, it's, in the grand scheme of things, it's not that big of a difference between their proposal and ours. Just to have it done with, go with the Wapishaw proposal.
The big difference is ten thousand dollars, which may not have been a lot to you, but it does to me. I know there was a lot of problems out there and stuff, and I'm not saying it was your problem, but, you know, it didn't go the way that it should have. I get tired of these projects that don't go the way they should, but I know there's always some element in there that you can throw in there to make it look good, because I remember a long time ago when I was in construction, I always had an excuse. But I would go along with it, even though it's, I just like to have the job done, so I guess I would go along with it.
You're gonna want sixty-six?
Yeah.
Right?
Well, we don't know about everything that went on out there, so I think I'd have to go with the staff proposal, because you, Bill, Sean, Jeff, Jenna, and Barb know the backstory, so if that's what you guys propose, I mean, I can't see going against you guys. So I would recommend the staff proposal for the fact that you guys know everything that went on.
I'm gonna call for a motion.
I'll make a motion, go forward with the proposal to, of the new fees held back of sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty, twenty-two cents.
Do we have a second for that?
One second.
You have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Passes, three, two. That wasn't on Venus, you just knew where I was.
Barb?
That wasn't on Venus, you knew where I was on the deal. You still on that medication, too, you know?
So we are now splitting, just to clarify.
We, they just accepted your proposal of sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty, twenty-two.
That's fine, I wasn't sure of the exact dollar amounts, and that's why, but it was a split on the liquidated...
And you paid all the other damages, we're listed, we'll stick to the warranty area. If you got that done, whenever that's done.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
And the comedy of errors term was not a good term to use, there was no comedy involved.
No, I got the point.
It was a lot of hard words.
I only wrote it up because you said.
No, no, and I, you know, and once you repeated it, then I, you know, I kinda thought, yeah, the comedy was the wrong term to use, but... It got done, it's working well, so, you know, when we had approval on certain things, for instance, the commineuter at the end, that took a week, boom, boom, done deal, you know, and when we finally got to, for the drying beds, we knocked that out in two weeks' time. There was like nine thousand lineal feet of concrete. So when things clicked, they clicked well.
Well, I will, once again, Pete, I thank you for what you did out there.
No, thanks for your good words, appreciate it.
You can stay if you want.
Mind if I excuse myself? Take care, folks, thank you.
Get a good holidays, Pete.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Alright, next motion, the right under. General business is a land donation prepared by administration. The city of Sturridgeville has been approached by Avison Young, the management company, in regards to their client BD, wishing to donate five point five, four or five acre parcel, which is formerly owned by the Roster Medical Bar to the city of Sturridgeville. If you look at the attached mapping, as you know, it is. The city is free to utilize this property in any manner we desire. BD will be responsible for all legal fees associated with this donation. And, yeah, I understand where that chunk is in the backside.
I'm looking at it.
What are we looking at here, this one? This here?
To right across from the Northwater Tower site.
Yep.
This is the area here?
Is it the blue one?
The blue area.
The blue's exactly.
The blue's exactly.
This blue's exactly.
Yeah, that other area is out of your city boundaries.
This is all...
Is it? It's as messed up as Rochester.
That's pretty much.
This is where the new, newest building out there.
Yeah, no, I get it, right across from where people do their gardens, isn't it?
Yep.
Yep, right across, just like...
Okay, so from, from the Rochester Medical Drive, all the way, I'm looking at the Google map, all the way over to like that driveway right there?
Yep, where they're working on that house they're tearing down and stuff.
Okay.
So what prompts something like this? They just love working with us so much, and they're such... Just gives a sick change of ass. We're just such good people here.
Still get beat.
They really like the mayor. Never yell at once.
Is there any idea what this, what this might get used for, or anyone come up with any ideas yet, or just just gonna hang on to it until somebody?
This has been in the works for part of a while.
There's already some interest in it, so we'll settle.
So it's, I don't know, I'd say it's not much too good, but we've been working on this quite a while, and it's supposed to be done here.
I think it looks too good to be drilled.
We proved it's accepted, it's ours. Now we need a motion.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Dick makes a motion to accept it. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We accept it. General business. General business, public works job descriptions personnel policy amendment. With the recent approval of the two thousand nineteen budget reorganization of the public works department this year, personnel committee has approved at their November twenty-eighth meeting, the updated job descriptions. They also approved the amended personnel policy. There are a number of deletions regarding the former vacation sick leave policy that is no longer used. Once the PTO policy was adopted in two thousand fifteen. A revision of some of the language used in the current policy was reworded, all the changes are shown in red. Counsel action request that we get to is be to approve the updated job descriptions for public works department and employee personnel amendment. You're reading. Yep.
I haven't had a chance to review anything, can you guys give me an hour fifteen minutes here, please?
Sure.
I hope so.
All right, if you have any questions, we can direct them over there to staff, otherwise we'll be looking for a motion. I was creating one, it's an hour and a half to read through it.
No, I already suffered through it twice.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That also carries. That will take us on to the next one, which is general business, resolution designating polling place. New legislative changes include the need to designate our polling place each year. Attached is a resolution designating the Sturtefield Civic Center as the polling place for Sturtefield residents.
Do you guys have any idea what prompted that?
No, I, they, we started doing it like three years ago.
It's like we have gridlock at the state Capitol, but we have time to pass stuff like this. I suppose because we were trying to hide the polling place from some people, apparently?
Yeah, I know, this is crazy.
I mean, I don't know how they find time to pass the stuff that they do, and you can't get budgets. I'll make a motion to approve this.
We got a motion to approve? Second?
A second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, that carries. Next one under general business. Two thousand nineteen CIP authorizing condemnation of ROW. At the November thirteenth council meeting, the council by motion to approve proceeding with the eminent domain process for the right-of-way acquisition of a portion of Fourth Avenue Southeast.
Wait, here it is.
City Attorney Melanie Left has requested that the council formally adopt the founding resolution authorizing condemnation of right-of-way for City Street. Resolutions in the, come up?
No, they didn't fail to input in there.
All right, didn't come up, does anybody wanna see it? So the council actually requested would be to approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash, a resolution authorizing condemnation of right-of-way for City Street.
So move. Second?
Make a motion and a second, any discussion of questions? Hear you none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That also carries. That takes us to the mayor's staff and assault reports. Tonight, the mayor's report. We send our sympathies to the families of Warren Meyer, Lauren Oswigand, Lori Peterson, Phil McGrann, Michael Hilger, Roy Gisler, Wayne Fryhite. And if you didn't already hear at your table, but for the public, uh, our city administrator's father, Bill Schimmel Senior, passed away. We'd like to send a big thank you out to the Winterfest committee for the fun-filled celebration we had, and it was a good time. It shortened up a bit, but it was still a great time. I think it was just last year, it was sixty-four degrees, wasn't it, when we did it? This year it was perfect, we had snow, it was snowy, it was sleeting, it was, just got a fresh cold of snow. Huh? Yep, it was winter time, we had snowball fights, I got plastered. Had lots of fun watching everyone at the park, and they were, they were building snowmen, the kids, the kids absolutely had a blast that night. And there was a pretty good crowd, a couple hundred people anyhow, so I'm glad to say fireworks were great, the floats that showed up were great, we had, everybody had a pretty good time. Don't forget, city hall will hold an open house on Tuesday, December eighteenth, from seven to five. Come sit by the fire and enjoy some refreshments. Yeah, bring your own dick. I'd like you to know that our auditor, Tom Wentey, has informed us that he will be retiring at the end of this year. We'd like to thank Tom for all the assistance he has given to the city these past twenty-eight years, and we wish him well and good luck and have a lot of fun in his retirement. And I was just talking with Cheryl and a couple of errands today about how, how am I gonna express, or we, gonna express our gratitude for someone who has put twenty years of service into this community? Even though some may not always agree with the decisions he made, I can honestly say, and I said it today, I think Dick's heart was always in the right place. Making Sturtefield the best it could be. I know it's always been your intention. And thank you for it. On behalf of the council, the city hall staff, the public works department, and the library, we'd all like to thank you so very much for all the countless hours you gave. I was, could've teased you tomorrow night, too, but, like I was telling Cheryl, just sitting here figuring out, just two council meetings a month, that's four hundred and eighty meetings to put in. Plus all the special meetings, plus all the committee meetings, plus all the, just the stuff behind the scenes you did that you didn't even tell us you were doing.
The extra meetings.
Yeah.
Taking a eye on a few post-planning meetings.
Yep, the post-planning meetings, yeah. I'd like to send out Christmas blessings to all of our residents. As I mentioned last year, it holds true this time always, to take time to be present. It's the best gift you can give to your friends and your family ever, and merry Christmas and cheers to a wonderful two thousand nineteen. Cause we won't have another meeting, Dick, unless you call us, if I follow.
We have a special meeting coming up.
Already? That was great.
It's working out for you.
The beauty of this, you can talk sidewalks at that, too.
Yep, that's right, that's coming up.
You're welcome, Dick. The nineteenth, a week from tomorrow, a week from tomorrow, from Wednesday, at five thirty at the Civic Center.
Civic Center, all right.
That's a special meeting?
That's a special meeting for the neighborhood of this, of the proposed CIP two thousand nineteen. And I think most of the discussion will be about sidewalks.
Get one more in front of you, Dick.
We've never had that side, uh, discussion before.
Oh, no.
That's good, first.
All right, thank you. City administrators report, does anybody got, just, it's in the packet, but anybody got anything to add to it or anything? All right. Finance directors report?
It was going to be about the special meeting, just to bring it up. And then also audit for two thousand and eighteen started today, they will come again in March, um, for four days.
All right, thanks, Barb. Public Works Director Report, Sean's got this.
Uh, two things, the ponds, they have started cleaning out ponds in, uh, Maple Brook, and they have one done. They're working on a second one today, and they'll get those finished up this week, the three in there, it's all seems to be going fairly well so far. One other issue, quick trip, uh, some direction from you guys a little bit. Quick trip in town is, uh, have been pushing their lot, and they push it over onto an alley right beside the apartment complex. Well, we had some complaints last year, and it was kind of a tug-of-war match with them trying to get them to do it. Well, I had spoke to them twice last week saying, I'm fine if you pile it there, but you have to move it in a timely fashion, like we do our piles that are piled. And I gave them a couple of days, and I actually told her twice last week, I talked to them and said, I'll give you till Friday. I came in Monday, the piles were still there. I called burn construction to haul them out, and we're gonna bill them for, I just, I don't wanna babysit and sit around and waste much time with it. So I hired at that time, going forward, I mean, if they're not going to get them out in timely fashion, do we find them for putting it there? Do we just put it on me to contact someone to haul it out each time? Uh, I don't necessarily think, if there's gonna get to that, that it's my job to babysit.
Right.
And take care of them on a constant basis.
Who's doing their pile?
Uh, cutting-edge lawn out of Byron, is what I've been told.
And they, they had the ability to pile, but have they done with it, have they built it to haul it, or what? Or they won't?
I've got a little bit of conflicting reports on that. So I'm not positive they're even being called to haul the piles. Cause I've kinda been told that they thought it wasn't a big deal if it sat there, cause it used to sit there for years before nobody said anything. Well, now we got a complaint on it, which we do with a lot of stuff. And now that it's complained, we don't allow other businesses to put on our property and pile it up and leave it for us to take care of it, so, uh.
Well, they're putting it on our alley.
It's our alley it's stacked on.
Oh, they can't allow that.
No. Cars can get around it because, but they just, it's leaving it there the whole year, the apartment complex has complained.
Well, you get another area of snow and put a pile everywhere, you wouldn't get through there. That means they wouldn't have left that one like you said.
Keep going.
So you haven't talked to them for cutting-edge?
I tried calling them twice, and it goes, the number I have that goes to them, it goes, the line is busy every time I try and call them. So I haven't, but I've spoke to the manager down there twice, and then I spoke to the assistant manager, cause Trina was on vacation. And when I spoke to the assistant manager the other day, she told me to go this route, she was fine with it. So we haven't ruled with an iron fist, I informed them the entire time of what we are doing and how we are gonna do it. I just don't wanna have to worry about every single time, why should I have to call and make the arrangements for them when it's their business and theirs now?
Yes, we send them a letter, don't we?
I think we should send the letter to her boss, who's the district manager, and let them know that this will be the, that if it continues this way, then.
This will be a policy, we'll have it hauled out and done to them.
And I, I think it'll be taken care of.
And I'm willing to try, before we even go to that, just ride it out this one time and see if after we haul this and bill them for it, if they get the message that we're not gonna put up with it? And then maybe they will just start hauling it. But if someone will.
I think, I think personally, just send a letter anyhow.
Send a letter?
Just might as well do it more official and, and move forward with it.
We can state in the letter that the bill will be coming from.
Yeah, perfect.
And then that was it?
That's it, any questions for Sean?
Oh, did you, are the hockey rants guided to see if you're helping?
Uh, they're, they're gonna come in early Thursday night, uh, after cleaning out our Wednesday night and flood through the night. So I'm hoping this weekend they will be open, but we're getting thirty-degree weather coming up.
I saw that, too.
Which wreaks havoc on them, so we'll see what happens. Huh?
Are some of our streets in the afternoon?
Yeah, we can skate on them, can't we?
Sliding hill getting used?
Yes.
Yeah?
Cool.
So we hope to open the warming houses this weekend.
I have one more question at the expense of being this long, it can be a short answer, but you did mention that the GIS system's all done and that it's, it's already helped on a few things? What's an example that it's, I mean?
So, so we have a, a potential developer that may come to town, and he wanted to, uh, listing up different properties and then tax statements and everything. And it was just like so quick to go to that new program and identify the properties, make the copies. Um, on the same program I had open, I could click on it and brought me up the tax statement, make that copy, and it was like four clicks versus the county website, which would've just taken hours to do.
Money well spent.
And we did two things.
Today with it.
Today we did, yes.
Guys coming in looking, wanting, we can pull up serial photos and show the measurements on there and everything on it and.
Yeah, gave them the square footage.
Give them the copies.
Where it is, where the water sewer connections come in, and.
That's awesome.
Yeah, yep.
And then one more thing on the streets. Uh, if we get comments on, we have put salt sand on the streets just about, I'm not gonna put any more out there, because there's so much on there now, it's just, and today it started cutting, so we went out this afternoon and started blading some of it off. The temperatures have been low enough last week that everything we put on just got dragged down the street and basically wasted, it didn't get cut in at all. So we realize they are bad, but with a wet, heavy snow, it got drugging on, it, it's gonna be for a bit, and we scraped today, and we will be out scraping again tomorrow, and we'll go out every day until we get it off. But with the weather the way it was, there really wasn't a whole lot we could do.
Is that what happened with one of them?
What's that? Yeah. And he cut, he cut today with the underbody, and cut a lot of it off, and it helped, but it's still not down there, hopefully it warms up enough again the next couple of days.
The street isn't taking good with hot weather, so.
So, yeah, it's, that street's rough anyway. So, but if you get comments, we have put, people don't think we have, cause it hasn't been working, but we have put so much salt sand out there that we're just wasting the product at this point.
What's so different about that? You're gonna get, no matter what, if it was perfect, you still get people complaining. So, human nature.
All right, thank you guys for helping out with the winter fest to get the trees out and stuff moved around and anything. Lawn will do the next day and anything else, but you look out, right, so thanks a lot. City engineers report?
Our report is in your packet?
No year-end, nothing special for the year-end, you got floors or anything?
Wasn't the year-end thing tomorrow?
Huh?
Is the party tomorrow? She's gonna be at the special meeting.
Throw a party next night if you want, your festival age wants to throw a party.
And aren't we having this special meeting?
Yes.
It's not the last meeting of the year for me with you guys.
We'll wait for our gifts on the last.
Thought I can't give you gifts.
They're under a certain amount, you can't.
Five dollars.
So you got, what's in here, anybody got any questions for a city engineer? We have any problems anywhere, or things moving the way you want it, did you hear that?
Things are moving, um, with the eminent domain process for next year's project, we won't be, we likely won't be bidding as early as normal. Um, just to be aware of that. But we're still moving forward with everything.
Can't you bid it with like phase one, phase two, or something like that, or?
Um, I don't. I mean, at your direction, yes, we could, but.
Gee, I can read between the lines on that. It's possible, but if you make me do it.
Uh, you run a chance of increased prices and different things by doing that type of bidding, that type of bidding, or running an alternate on it.
Yeah.
Um, depending on what Melanie gets back to us, the year attorney gets back to us for our hearing date. Uh, we should still be able to bid in March, uh, or by March of next year, which is still within the prime time for bidding. Um, so leaving the project as a whole, you're gonna get the best bid results.
Okay.
How's the sod doing, by the way?
The sod? It's covered in snow.
So it's doing good.
It's doing great.
Nice cover.
Yep.
We will see how that sod is doing in May, we'll evaluate it.
All right. Any other questions for Jenna? All right, thank you, Jenna. That'll take us to the library director's report, Pat, you back there?
Yes. My report is in your packet, and it is incomplete because we don't get all our statistics from cell phone at the beginning of the month. Although those will be recorded later. Um, today, we had a special story time, it's the last one we do for this year. And we had about twenty-two moms and kids there and lots of jingle bells, and it was a real exciting time for them. And, uh, we're finishing out some of our end-of-the-year projects and getting ready for two thousand nineteen. So if you have any questions?
Any questions for Pat? All right, hear you none, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Fire chief report?
Uh, we had our elections last night for two thousand nineteen positions, uh, nothing changed. So, well, I stay fire chief for another year, no matter what, so he gets in the book with me for another twelve months. Uh, Steve Wolf will remain the assistant chief, Josh Podine will be the secretary, Nathan Petrick, treasurer, Lisa Jelenic will remain the medical director. Bob Roberts and, uh, Brandon Dolman are at large for the executive board. So the leadership team stays exactly the same, uh, how it was, uh, last year. Uh, truck service, we've been getting the engines, uh, and all the apparatus, their annual service. Uh, we did get the ladder truck fixed, a hydraulic leak that was on it, uh, Catco took care of that for us. Uh, we were able to do that for about eleven hundred dollars, I believe was the cost on that. Uh, Severson's been doing the, uh, annual service repair on the engine, so going through, doing, uh, fuel changes, filter changes, oil changes, and, uh, the DOT inspection. Just make sure that there's nothing going on with the apparatus. Uh, we bought new intake valves for tanker two and truck one. Uh, the valves we're putting on the ladder truck can go onto a new truck whenever, uh, we get around to doing something with that. So it's not money that's wasted on that, that'll transfer over, uh, at some time in the future. Uh, we did have to buy a new hose bed cover for engine one, uh, we lost that last winter, never ever found it, it's sitting in a ditch somewhere, but no one found it when they're mowing. Uh, so we went ahead and just bought another hose bed cover out of Iowa. Uh, engine two's hose bed does need to be, uh, covered, needs to be repaired, we'll do that locally, so we'll pull that off, there's a canvas shop in Rochester that will fix that for us. Uh, ladder rack on engine two, uh, some modifications to that. We did set our two thousand nineteen training calendar, uh, so the training calendar is set. We did set our two thousand nineteen training calendar, uh, so the training calendar is set for the department for the next year. Uh, we did, uh, complete the final inspection for the fire department for the Bobcat facility. Uh, Bobcat did provide us all the, uh, floor plans for that, now that is in our electronic, uh, dispatch stuff, so we can pull up the plans, where everything's at, uh, before we even arrive on scene. Fire alarms, gas shut off, and everything like that, so we've been doing that, uh, since we got, uh, Peterbilt and stuff like that out there, so it just makes it easier, uh, for us to do those type of calls. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, we will be working on more pre-plans, getting more of the buildings pre-planned, so that we can look at it from out the truck before we arrive on scene where the utilities are. Uh, we are going to be working on the Knox box issues, uh, we've run into a number of, uh, buildings where they have fire alarms or sprinklers, uh, we can't make entry into it because we don't have keys for it. Uh, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we put in the ordinance where they have the Knox box, uh, Angelique's will help us do that, so she's gathering up a list of businesses right now, so we can send a general letter out to everybody. And then Angelique, uh, has been doing a phenomenal job for us, uh, run report, she's staying right up on it, so, uh, she actually came up with a new form, uh, the staff are filling out, uh, makes it very easy for her to do the, not only the run report, but any building associated with it. So I think, uh, our, with that aspect of it, I think we're being much more deliberate about, uh, getting our reports in on a timely manner, and then also billing, uh, for the areas that we need to build. So Angelique is working out phenomenal for us. That's about it.
Can I ask you, on your elections, you, you do that by years of service, or anybody can be nominated for any position, or you gotta be?
The elected, so in, so it's inside the bylaws that the city council approves, so in the bylaws, uh, for, uh, elected positions, there are no requirements. So it is really by election, then the election only is a recommendation to city council, city council has to approve it. So come January, uh, actually later this month, uh, the executive board will send you the recommendation from the fire department by election, then city council, uh, will ratify that.
So by me like, can anybody, what's a fireman run for chief, or for assistant chief?
There is no requirement, sir. Yep, so now for the officer positions that are appointed by the fire chief, so I have certain positions that I'm allowed to appoint, uh, without going through a detailed collection. Uh, that is the chief engineer, all the engineers, lieutenants, and captains, there are requirements, minimum requirements for those positions, so that the chief can't just pick his buddy that just started this year. Uh, but for the elected positions, the department decided that, uh, that would all be weeded out by members voting on it. So if someone voted on a one-year person, they probably have a lot of extensive history to be able to show that, and the checks and balances is that the city council has to ratify it. So if the city council's not comfortable with the recommendation, they can actually say no to it, and go back to the department.
Alright, thanks. Any other questions for chief? Thanks, Vance.
No problem.
That takes us on to committee, commission, and board reports, chamber of Congress. EDA, HRA, you got minutes of November twentieth in there.
Meeting next week, too.
We have a meeting next week. Finance?
Had a horribly long meeting to go over all the coverage we've been over.
Got it, done. Library? Park board?
All done for the year.
Personnel? We have minutes of the November twentieth meeting, and some of that was taken care of tonight, personnel, job descriptions, revisions. Planning zoning?
Uh, meeting coming up in January.
Public safety?
Uh, Debbie Straylow is, um.
Cancelled.
Yeah, he's at train, so he isn't here tonight, and the meeting that was scheduled tonight is cancelled until January.
Public works? ROCOB, no report tonight. Transit advisory committee?
There'll be a report in January for you, they have that meeting.
Oh, okay.
A week or two ago, so he won't be here.
Good deal. Communications?
Wait a second.
You gotta run it now, you run it here.
I don't want to do that. How many times have you done this open mic, if you know it by heart? The city council welcomes and encourages participate, this is just like. Rattle along, from community leaders, or members, if you see how it is. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to David privacy rules. No employee's name may be used. Please do not accept action from the council, deceiving regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to four minutes, speaker will be recognized only once. At this time, we ask that anyone who would like to address the city council, could please step up to the podium and state your name and address.
Uh-oh. Oh. Oh. See you doing?
Got another one.
Oh. He should, he should. One hundred percent.
Yeah, baby manager now.
Definitely.
Yeah.
I think he's a liar.
Yeah, so do I. Call it the last name.
Call it, babe.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. You called it, right?
Yep, he called it. I got a second, now what are you gonna say? You gotta take a photo, hey, we got a photo.
Oh, this is bigger.
I don't want you. Want to adjourn?